It is seven o'clock. Calling to order the March 24th, 2025 meeting of the Beacon City School District Board of Education. Please stand for the pledge. Vicki, can you call the roll?
Here.
Excused?
Here.
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 Here. Matt, can you review the fire exits?
Exits are in the back of the LGI.
Okay, open to the public. Does anybody have a public comment that they would like to make? Seeing none. All right, we will move on to the workshop. We're starting with our presentation on people personnel services and special education. Pre-K from Dr. Chadwell Dennis.
So, good evening, Superintendent Landau and Board of Education. So tonight I'll be presenting on the proposed budget for the 25-26 school year. We're excited to provide you information on all the interesting things we've done over this year and some highlights for the future. So this is our current pupil services team. I'm Heather Chadwell Dennis. I'm the Assistant Superintendent. Christina Bartley is the Assistant Superintendent for Secondary. She chairs meetings and works with the middle school and the high school. Angela Sturbinz is a CSE chairperson that is filling the role as a substitute as we have an open position for Assistant Director at the elementary level. You may recognize the name Jane Servone. She was a former teacher here. She chairs our preschool meetings for us and we'll go through some of those numbers throughout the presentation this evening. And then Jen Masternicola is the elementary support person who's currently supporting Angela. And Dana Quintana supports Christina Bartley. And then we have Terri Betancourt, who has a very full-time job supporting our preschool students. And as just a reminder, it's age two years, 11 months up into transition into kindergarten because we're responsible for the education of three to 21-year-olds. We have Esther Delgado is sitting right now as a substitute in the out-of-district homeschool support. She also supports individuals with 504 plans in the K-8. And that position is one that we are hiring as well. And we have Joan Edmondson, who works directly with me, who is here in the audience, and Suzanne DeCastro as well, who is our Senior Account Clerk. So here's the overview of the topics we'll be talking about this evening. Talk about some highlights, as I mentioned earlier, for this year and looking into the future. The Individuals with Disabilities Education Act and Section 504 of the Rehab Act and what the responsibilities are there for our department. What our out-of-district programming looks like, including any BOSI's components and 853s or special act schools. What the contractual services are. What we are looking forward to on the horizon. Any staffing impact and then a budget summary. And of course, any questions at the end. So here are some very brief highlights. We've done a lot of really, I think the staff has done some amazing things this school year, but these are just some standout highlights. So you approved as a board the training of five safety care trainers. And just briefly, because a question was posed, what is safety care? And it really is de-escalation techniques. So when a student is communicating with their behavior, their needs, predominantly K-8 is where we use this, where we talk about limiting our words, not engaging in the conversation and the struggle with the student, creating safe spaces. And so we have five trainers in the district. And for those five, they've trained 88 different people. We do not have 88 currently in the district as aides and TAs have moved quite a bit. But over the last couple of years, we've trained about 88. We have expanded our inclusion-based professional development for general education and special area teachers and transportation. It's been a hyper-focus of us this year, really looking at the general education side, special area teachers like music, art, physical education, and then transportation. Because our students see their drivers first thing and last. And so on opening day, I met with the entire fleet of drivers and monitors and really talked about inclusive practices on the bus and how we can support them as a department. This year, we did a caregiver presentation and we talked about, it was a 30-minute presentation on what parents can expect in the annual review process. I found out today the county is using it as a training video, which is remarkable because, you know, there's always a breakdown in like, what does the county do and what do school districts do? And there's always learning from that space. So I was really excited that they reached out to me about that. So the county will learn what Beacon is doing. And then integrated co-teaching. It was approved at this time last year to have GNR Inclusive Group come in and work with our sixth grade teaching pairs. And they expanded out to our special area teachers as well. And I met with those teachers and received really positive feedback. So we'll talk about what that'll look like going forward too. So just as a reminder, the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act is monitored out of the United States Office of Education. It's a federal law indicating that all kiddos who are identified as having disabilities are entitled to a free, appropriate public education. The Part 20201 regulations are what govern New York State. And we have about 215 more rules than the federal government has on service delivery, what does discipline look like for students with disabilities, and what procedural safeguards are for families. And then Office, Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973 is an anti-discrimination law. And it really is the basis of ensuring that children or adults, you know, adults could have a 504 as well. It's served under the Office of Civil Rights, which is again, part of the United States Office of Education, ensuring that there are not discriminatory practices in our spaces. So currently, we have 74 classified preschool students. And so for us, a little one, it's an umbrella. It's classified preschooler with a disability. And there's 13 currently pending evaluations. And I will say that those are active cases we have right now. This year alone, we've had 147. So where students may have been evaluated, they receive services for a short period of time, may have been ineligible, may have exited, may have transitioned in and out. So on our footprint right now, from September to now, we have 147. These, there's 74 students receiving services and 13 that are currently in the evaluation process. These are our students in our buildings right now, under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act that are receiving services. So the numbers that you see there, so for example, 32 at Forestal. We have 32 children with individualized education programs in that space that we are providing service to. So that number in total is about 458 students served inside our six buildings. And these are our children who have 504 plans. The majority of these are accommodation plans, or they may have some related services. And you can see the number there. The highest being Beacon High School. Obviously, it's the largest. We have a little bit different system for supporting 504s at the high school. We have a designated psychologist that has a support person here for that. It all monitors out of the PPS office, but the K-8 comes directly out of the PPS office. All right, this is a really exciting slide, and I just wanted to do the comparison for you. So if you look at the yellow bars, that is children receiving their special education services in their home building. So looking at Glenham, 65% of Glenham students received their services in Glenham. And then as of compared to 24-25, so today, 75% of students are receiving it in the home building. You'll see the smallest impact on Glenham because that has been the location traditionally that a lot of the programming was housed. So if you had an attendance area at JBF and you needed services, you would go to Glenham or another school that had those services. So as you can see, looking at JBF in particular, which has a 25% differential there. 34% of students whose homeschool was JBF received their programming in that building in 2019-2020 and we're up to 59% now. So if you were, if you lived in JBF, it is 25% more likely that you'll receive the services at that building. What is not described here, which I think is another highlighted effect, is that there are many families that if a student had to move to a different building for the services, their sibling was requested to go as well. So we had that happening. And over time, we're trying to build those programs, kindergarten, slide into kindergarten, so that we can as much as possible have the children receive their education in their community neighborhood school. Okay, so here is an identification of our out-of-district programming. These are the locations that we currently have students in. There are others, but these are, just happen to be where our 40 students are sitting right now. A difference that you'll notice from last year was the Duchess County BOSI's has changed their name to the Resilience Academy. That is what was formerly known as the Alternative High School. They've just changed the name. So that is your nine through 12 program. Salt Point Center still remains K-8. So on the left are all of our BOSI's that we work with. We work with Duchess BOSI's, Oradolster, PNW, and Southern Westchester. Some of the children, like for example, the ones that are more southern, may have transferred into us and that was their location and we need to maintain those programs. Then there's 853 and special act schools. There's Abilities First, American School for the Deaf, which is out of state. Anderson Center for Autism, Center for Spectrum Services, which is in Ellenville and Kingston. Deveraux has multiple campuses. Green Chimneys, Kaplan, Hawthorne, The Orchard School, which is Andras Sale, Discovery, Westchester School, and Yorktown High School. Of note, in that list there, we have six students who are residential. So for example, if you look at Green Chimneys, there might be a student who, we might have a student that's in a day program at Green Chimneys, but also maybe in a residential program at Green Chimneys. And I'll talk a little bit later about maintenance cost and when children live there, how the county and the school districts work together for maintenance cost. So currently, we have 40 students in these out-of-district placements. Last year, we projected 43 in the budget total. And we are solidly sitting within our budget from last year at 40. So that is our number right now in time, not what we're projected to have for next school year. Here are the locations of students who are parentally placed that we provide either funding for or services for. So inside Beacon, we have Hudson Hills Academy and New Covenant Learning Center. So if you're a student who attends Hudson Hills Academy, but you are in the Arlington catchment area, let's say, and you attend Hudson Hills, Beacon provides those services to the student. So if you look at the locations outside, the example is Our Lady of Lord's High School sits inside Arlington. But if you're a Beacon student who attends there, we reimburse the cost for those services. So Arlington would provide the services, just like at St. Mary's and Fishkill. Wappingers provides the services, and then they bill us for the reimbursement. So we provide all those services for all those children. All right, here's another, I think, really nice highlight. We were looking at how many, one of the things that, a metric that we're measuring is parent engagement. And, you know, how do we bring parents into the conversation more and more? So if you look at 2019-2020, the blue bar, we had 1,554 meetings. And of that, we had 1,995 parents participating. Now, you might have some meetings with multiple parents. So that's why that number is higher than what the meeting number is. And then we had COVID 2021 was when we started going to the virtual. Most of them were in-person, then we moved to virtual. And then if you look to the right, where it's 23-24, you can see that last year we had 2,232 parents participate. We had a smaller number of meetings, 1,368 meetings. The reason being is because we have instituted a practice where it's something called an amendment no meeting. It's a small change to the document. Parents, we make a proposal, we send them legal documents, the parent signs off on it, and then we can update without a meeting. So while we've reduced the number of meetings so that, you know, the teachers remain in the classrooms, care providers remain with the students, we've reduced the number of meetings, we've increased the number of parents that we're actually having at the meetings. And so all the way on the right, where you see 1612, that's just where we are today. So from July 1, which is our start, because we have the summer programming to today, we've had 1,002 meetings and of that, 1612 parents have participated. Or grandparents or uncles could be extended family members. So district students managed or supported through pupil services. We have 69 homeschooled students. We work with Duchess BOSI's because they have to have home plans, quarterly reports. And of those students, some may receive special education services. And we provide most of those services through a contract because many of it is in the home. And we serve 60 unhoused students through McKenna Vento. Some of those are siblings, sibling pairs. So we might have a student at JBF and a student at Rambout that are unhoused and make up part of that 60. Here are examples of our contractual services. And I'm just going to go through them briefly. And I'm going to highlight Brooklyn Center, the Brookline Center again a little bit later. But Anderson Center for Autism provides support through a contract. We have two very specialized classrooms in the district at JBF. And we partner with Anderson to get insight in the structure of the room and the makeup of the room. And that room might change year to year based on the needs of the children, what our visual schedules look like, what our augmentative communication devices look like. Already talked about safety care. GNR Inclusive Group has provided support and we're looking to provide that support into seventh grade at Rambout. Various professional developments. We recently had Andrew Shanick come, who talked about evaluations with psychologists and speech pathologists and how the two intersect and how not to over-test our students, but get the right metrics that we need. We have Braille Services, Teacher of the Deaf. We have a speech-language pathologist for the students who might be in home placements, BCBA. We have hospitalized student tutoring. So if a student becomes ill or needs some psychiatric care, we provide that tutoring service as well. For students who are unable to leave their house at all, we provide services in their home. Skilled nursing. I looked at the back data for skilled nursing services. So that's a student who might need an actual one-to-one nurse. The last time we had, we have had one this year for a very short period of time for feeding. The last time was 2020. And we're anticipating this year coming up, we're going to have at least two or three that, students that will need that high level of care coming in from our preschool programs. An Astra clinic at Rambout, so I'll highlight that. One of the governor's supports was that she was looking to have more outside agencies working inside our schools. And so it's taken about a year and a half to plan for Astra because we wanted to be really clear about what was the responsibility of Astra and what was the responsibility of our social workers. So what's really nice about this Astra contract is it will be a provider at Rambout with flex hours, so they can meet with families after school. And they will provide services when school is closed. So if we're on a holiday or it's a summer break, they will continue to provide services. And they will also connect us with psychiatric services that has been lacking. Part of that work in the data was how many students at the middle school level were being served by Astra. And it was five, which was really low. That seemed like a very, very low number. And after meeting with them and talking to the staff at Rambout, it was really about, how do you get to appointment in the middle of the day? You know, they're in school, they have to get there, families are working. And so this just seemed like a natural relationship to foster and we're looking forward to that. Occupational and physical therapy services are contracted. We're looking to, it was, I said it last year, we're trying really hard to hire a physical therapist. Last year, we recommended two. We were able to secure one and the other was on a contract. And we're hoping this year to move forward to actually have two. And then the independent educational evaluations. So this is our staffing impact for the next year coming up. So we are projecting that we will need a .5 additional speech-language pathologist to make up for all of the services that we need, particularly at JBF. That's the location. We have many children using augmentative communication devices, which are like communication boards. And they're using them in art and music and a lot of spaces. And it takes a lot of collaboration. So we're anticipating that we'll need that. Physical therapists, like I mentioned, we're still two. Just one has to be on contract right now. And we're looking to have two within our BTA contract. 4.5 occupational therapists, six psychologists, and eight social workers, so no change there. We're anticipating that we'll need one additional special education teacher at the elementary level. However, we are anticipating we'll need one less at the high school. So they're really, although we're going up one at the elementary, we'll be going down one at the high school. And we're doing that through retirement. And the middle school, we're expecting no change. They currently have 13 teachers and we're anticipating that same need for next year. So talking a little bit about what's on the horizon, very exciting. So the Brookline Center, Mr. Dwyer had mentioned this previously. It's for students who are experiencing some mental health disruption or school avoidance. And the connection to home needs to be at a higher level than what we currently experience. So it might be a student who has not come to school for 30, 40 days and coming back to school for that first day is really hard. Right now, if a student is, has a disruption to like Westchester Medical Center, they then try to take a down step to like intensive day treatment at BOSI's or maybe an Astra Treatment Center. And then they're transitioning again, hopefully into the high school. We're trying to reduce that transition because every transition is very difficult. So what we're hoping to do and have been successful with in other locations is going from the mental health disruption, where they're getting the services right back to us in more of a therapeutic manner because we want them to stay connected with their teacher that they feel the most comfortable with. So if they're comfortable with their math teacher, that's the first class they go to and then the second class. And it's a six-week build back up, back into the full integration. So they're not waiting. The other, the other real trick thing is that if they are discharged from four wins, let's say, they have to wait for a spot in a location. And so we're hoping to stop that wait so they can come right back into, into their classroom. GNR Inclusive, again, I mentioned the sixth grade. I met with them, they gave really positive feedback. What they were looking for was to have the coaches in the classrooms more often. And so we'd like to build that into seventh grade. But the sixth grade teacher said, you know, but we've started this great work. Can we keep open consults with them so that we can continue this, you know, problem solving together? I thought it was great. And then the elementary has asked for some support, just in professional development, not necessarily like lesson development, but more like, tell us about, more about co-teaching. The contract we had with GR this year also was for the administration, the psychologists, and all of our lead teachers. So they all participated in it as well. And then looking at reading instruction on the horizon, providing seven special education teachers with really very specific designed reading, reading instruction to support our kiddos who are having the most difficulty learning to read. We're going to continue our inclusion strategies specifically around transportation and special areas. We have implemented AI into most of our spaces, which has been really helpful. So you can take a standard, any of the educational standards and have it differentiate based on a specific need. And that's been really helpful, even around our PE lessons. Safety care, like I mentioned, we're looking at bringing in additional assessments in special education, looking more at reading assessments. And like I mentioned, the Astra Services Clinic here in Beacon at Rambout Middle School. So these are our supplies and materials. A little difficult to see. These are two different sensor rooms. Obviously, one is low-lit, one is high-lit. Brand-new room coming into Rambout. It is currently set up on the second floor. We're moving the occupational therapy office right next door. We've provided a protocol for that space. And on Professional Development Day, the teachers were able to receive training so that they can use it whenever, whenever a student needs to use it. But, you know, augmentative communication devices, updated test protocols, mobility aids, therapeutic materials, and professional subscriptions. So these are our funds that come through the federal government. These are our 611 and 619 funds. This offsets our salaries for teachers. So it's just under $900,000. We're expecting to receive that in this next year coming up through the federal government. And this helps us offset our teachers' costs. Medicaid reimbursement. So this is our projected reimbursement. This isn't what we have right now. But if we're on par, this is what we're expecting to receive back during this school year. That's a significant increase than what we've received in the past. Last year, we were just over $200,000. So we're hoping to get close to $500,000 this year. The reason why it's different this year is we've had a concerted effort in communications with families, making sure that they, we're streamlining that communication. We have the consent signed. We have a different contracted consultant agency that we work with. And we're also, for the first time, looking at getting funds back for transportation for our students who are higher cost. And so here's the budget summary. The projected cost for this year is 5.9. It's an increase from budget to budget to about $700,000. As a secondary, the revenue that we're bringing in is, we anticipate to be about $500,000. So it, you know, looking at the two budgets, it's about 207 increase. But if you look from budget to budget, from year to year, it's $700,739.4. We are anticipating in that number to have about 46 to 48 students who need out-of-district support. And what we're seeing is the level of need at the preschool level is, is, is offsetting the cost for an increase in the budget. Last year, when I did the budget, we projected at 43. Again, remember, we're saying we're sitting at 40 right now. So we were about $140,000 in that, in that range. If we were serving a 43 right now, we would see that we would probably be very close to exceeding the budget that was presented last year. And the reason for that is because there's an increase in costs overall. So I wanted to mention maintenance. So maintenance is when a student is in a residential setting and the county offsets some of those costs. Right now, the district is sitting at about 58% of that cost is billed back. So the county gets the bill and they bill us and we have to offset the residential fee of about 58%. So for a student where they might cost $113,000, $114,000 to be in an out-of-district placement, the state sets that rate. There's also a maintenance cost for if they live in that location. The other impact is the nursing services. You know, that is a person that we will be hiring under a contract for supporting children with those needs. So that's some of the difference. And again, the Medicaid reimbursement, we're seeing that increase due to better record-keeping, better consulting, and transportation. So that is the overall summary. And I'm here for any questions.
Thank you so much. That's a really detailed presentation. It gives a lot of context. I mean, I learned things I didn't know, which is about the, about the operations of the department. So that's great. Does anybody have any questions?
I was just gonna ask, I see we have eight social workers.
Yes.
We have six schools. I'm guessing, does the high school, just because I don't, does the high school have two and?
So the high school has three.
Three.
Three. They have three. We're looking at one to be designated to work with the Bright Program this year coming up, so no increase. At the middle school, there is one. We're looking for an Astra person to come in for that. And then one at the elementaries.
Okay.
One at each elementary?
Yep, one at each elementary.
We did last year, or two years ago, we added an additional guidance counselor to the middle school. At the middle school level, they have more flexibility. They're not, you know, than a high school guidance counselor. So they do a lot of social, emotional support for students.
Heather, when you do the PD with the transportation.
Yes.
How do you, does that happen? How, well, how does that happen? So, because their schedules are.
Right.
You know, varied.
Right.
So is it those that, I'll just ask, how does it happen?
Yeah, so opening day. So I stood in front of the entire room full of people. I took questions in advance, so, you know, I kind of knew what they were gonna ask. We talked about like, what does behavior look like, communication? One of the things that came up that I would never have thought about was the mirror. When they're looking backwards on the bus and they're talking in the mirror, if you're an individual with a disability and you're lip reading or something, you're not catching what's being said there. And so we had conversations about what do visual aids look like, you know, music on the bus, all of those things. I will say, professional development days are hard because they still are on runs, right? They still have kids in out-of-district placements or they have other responsibilities going to Lord's or, you know, St. Mary's. So that's been challenging. But Debbie, who's the director of transportation, and I have been in many conversations about, should we break them? should we break them into smaller units, you know, do the morning? So I go over to transportation often and just stay and just listen to what they have to say, bring lollipops and just listen. And they have a lot of great suggestions. It's just like a matter of getting them all together is quite difficult.
Okay.
I had one question, it sounds like a big driver of increased costs is, is students coming at the preschool level who have really high needs.
Yes.
And if they stay with us, I imagine those needs will continue to, to be served here. So I, I don't know if you know, but is that like a fluke this year? Is that like a trend that we're seeing of more students with increased needs? Yeah, how does that like broader pattern look?
So I, I don't, I wouldn't say, it's hard to say in special education, because you just don't know. Like one year, you could end up with a student with a very high need and then not at all the next year. They could move tomorrow, like, so that's part of it too. We may have a student come in with a very high need, and we need to provide all these services, and then they're gone in a week. I don't think it's COVID-related as far as the disability level. I don't know how, you know, and part of that seven hundred thousand isn't all preschool. It's the fact that costs are going up, that, you know, maintenance costs were more responsible for residential than ever before. We have kids in out-of-state placements now. Very hard to find locations in state for any child who needs a higher level of service. So now we're crossing state lines, so that's expensive too. I, I can't give you an actual answer as to why, but I could just say it's happened. Here it is.
Thanks.
Don't a lot of those students actually go off of those IEPs later?
So over time, that's the goal. So, you know, we have children who might need nursing services for feeding, but the goal is over time that they're able to eat, you know, we might have those. We might have students that, you know, have gait trainers or walkers or any, you know, additional devices, and the goal is always to have them be stronger and be more, more mobile. But not always, you know, sometimes it's part, part of who they are. We're gonna need braille services for specific students for the entire time that they're here. So it really does depend on the student.
Okay, thank you, anybody else? All right, thank you so much, appreciate it. So next up is the new budget update from Matt and Anne Marie.
All right, tonight, we want to kind of revisit the last meeting just for a minute or two, just to check in with the board. We want to talk about what our proposed budget number is. We want to talk about what the year-to-year increase is. We also want to spend a little bit of time talking about the Transportation Department and the potential bus proposition for the ballot, and also what some of the technology initiatives are. So at any point, we don't have to wait till the end, just, just holler. We had a great conversation at the last board meeting, so I'm not gonna, you know, I'm not gonna belabor slides we've already been through. I'm just gonna quickly go through them because we had a lot of conversation around these the last time. So there's just a review of where our revenue sources come from. There was some confusion in the community months ago about this, and so we keep kind of reminding everyone that this is the breakdown. Our reserves and appropriated fund balance, what goes into the tax cap calculation. And the maximum levy increase is five point one five. And I just want to say a couple of things about that. That is at the tax cap. Beacon has proposed budgets and had budgets accepted by the community at the tax cap for the last sixteen years, I think, since the tax cap was put into place. So this is, this is nothing unusual. And moving forward, our recommendation, or my recommendation, is going to be to, to review a budget that's at that number, that's, that's at the tax cap. And so, you know, what all the presenters have been talking about up until this point, we'll talk about a little bit later in the presentation, then at the April seventh meeting when we talk about instruction. It's, it's at that tax cap that we're gonna be talking about. But obviously, the final decision for these things resides with the board. That final adoption date is April twenty-second, so about a month from now. So also during this process, any questions you have that we need to follow up on, please just let us know. But there was some conversation at the last meeting about the five-one-five. We did a little bit of calculating, we didn't put this on a slide, but we just wanted to get a sense of revenue at different numbers. So if the, if we brought the levy down to four point six eight, then we would have two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars less in revenue in that overall budget. If the tax levy was brought down to four point one five, then we would have four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars less in revenue. I just wanted to have that be a part of the thinking. So I didn't, you know, on April seventh, we're gonna get into detail about what some of our proposals are for the instructional budget, but I have been open about talking about, we'd really like to add two additional math intervention teachers at the elementary level, and a math intervention teacher at the elementary level. We're also looking at, you know, changes to the middle school schedule. I've talked about phasing these things in over two years, or doing one and then doing the other. At that first number, I talked about the four point six eight, what we would probably do instead is just sort of stick with what we have and not propose any additional positions whatsoever. At the four point one five number, we would be looking to make reductions across the board because that would be a number that we would have to probably look in each of our schools to find less spending. And at the, obviously, at the district level too. So moving forward, I just wanted to talk about that, briefly talk about, and, and we'll put some slides together that show this, Beacon's history with, with having budgets be at the tax cap and, and what it's meant for us. I think the one other thing, I was gonna talk about this at the end, but I'll mention it now, is we will, at the next meeting, have a comparison of our tax rates compared with all the neighboring districts. In Duchess County, I think we're in the, at least last year, we were in the bottom third of tax rates across the county. Across the region, we're, have some of the lowest tax rates across the entire region. So when I say region, I'm talking about Orange County, Putnam County, Westchester, like all the people we're competing with when we're hiring, and Duchess. So, so, so with all of that, we have one of the lower tax rates across the region, and we'll have a slide that shows that the next meeting. So capital project, just briefly about this. This is one of the main reasons that the tax levy rate is, is higher. We were very open when we proposed this to the community last spring, that it would have a tax impact. And it has had a bit of a tax impact with this here. So if you go back to what we were proposing to the community last spring, when it was on the bell, this fifty million dollar capital project, there was a tax impact over three years. And so this would be year one of that capital project tax impact. This capital project, again, it's the first time in twenty years Beacon's done a capital project that's impacted taxes. Usually, we've done much smaller projects that don't impact the, the tax revenue. Doing that time after time has put us behind with keeping up with, with keeping, keeping our infrastructure improved and functioning. So this project has a lot of infrastructure in it across all six of our schools. It also has some programmatic things, but it will be, would be adding cooling centers, which are very needed, to our elementary schools and middle school. High school's already air-conditioned. It would add improvements to the theater here at the high school. It would add improvements to the softball and baseball field. So it's a huge project for us, we're loving the planning part of it. Oh, I forgot, it would also create more secure entry rates for our buildings as well, which is, which is also super important. So these are much-needed improvements, it does have an impact on what's collected. But that is the number for the estimated tax impact on an average home, and usually that goes down once the assessments come out. So the preliminary budget number is eighty-six million in there. That budget-to-budget increase is three point six percent. Today and the following meetings, we're gonna get into what is going into that increase. But we're gonna start, well, first, this shows over the last few years, not including this three point six that we're proposing, what the budget increases have been for the last five. As you can see, we've been over three percent three of those years. This would be another year that we're proposing, it would be three point six. So we have some things driving it. Anne Marie's gonna jump in and talk about some of these things, but the employee retirement system shows an increase. When some people ask, well, why is the budget, why are we proposing a budget that's increasing three point six percent? We have health insurance costs that are going up seven to eight percent. Our general insurance, and this is a regional thing, this isn't a Beacon thing, is going up eleven percent. Just technology, Chromebooks, which we, we use still, Chromebooks. Chromebooks are going up ten percent. They're not saying tariffs, the company that we purchased them for are not saying tariffs, but it seems implied that that's part of that cost. I will put an asterisk here, for the last four years, I've talked about inflation, I've talked about supply chain disruption. So this is not about right now, you know, it's not any different from how I talked about economic factors in the prior administration, but when we're having like ten percent increases put on the number of Chromebooks we buy without really much of an explanation, we all probably can figure out what that is. So we, that's part of the overall increase in equipment, materials, and supplies. The health insurance one, though, is a large driver. How much, do you have an estimate of health insurance as part of our overall budget?
I don't know the percent, it's, it's about thirteen million dollars alone.
So thirteen and eighty-six, so that's probably about eighteen, nineteen percent. So I can do the math in a second, I can't do it in my head. So I'm gonna have Anne Marie explain this one.
I just did a quick slide to show you, you know, how the ERS and TRS rates have. So to, just so you know the difference, ERS is Employees Retirement System, it's all for the civil service employees and their pension, and TRS is Teachers Retirement System. So we do have a small decrease in teachers' retirement this year, which is helpful. Employees' retirement is definitely going up a lot more. Thankfully, it's on a smaller dollar amount of payroll, so, you know, it, it impacts us a little bit less. The teachers' retirement payroll obviously is more. But both are funded differently, TRS has its own fund, ERS is through the controller's office, so it's the way, it's, it basically is, is kind of dependent upon how the market does and the investment of the funds that are annexed, they're all both separate entities. And just, just kind of an overall comparison, and we'll get more into detail on the next meeting, but salaries for us is about forty-five million dollars, that's rough. Benefits are about twenty-five million, our debt service is six point six. So those three areas come up to about seventy-six million dollars, which is eighty-eight point five percent of the budget. So the budget's driven mainly by these three areas, and then the others are materials and supplies, you know, all of, all of the rest of the budget pieces. That just kind of gives you an idea of, you know, where our money is definitely going. And just to give you an idea too of debt service, I know there was a question at the last meeting. So it is for school construction, so a ban is a bond anticipation note so that, right now in our current capital project, everything is through a bond anticipation note. We are planning to do permanent bonds because a lot of the work is done already. There is a discussion about, should we go to bonds? Should we do another ban for another year? Is the interest rate gonna go down? Is, you know, so there's, so we're working really closely with our financial advisors to make the decision within the next month of what would be best for the district. And then on the bottom, also, we, we do bond anticipation notes for our buses, so we structure them over a five-year period so that it matches the transportation aid that we receive on buses. So that's how we finance them. So the difference between twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-five, twenty-six is what we spoke about earlier. It's the addition of additional debt that we need to pay for the current, for the new project, for the twenty-four project.
That's just a reminder, we had this one up. I took some of the slides out of the previous one, but we kept this one in. Just an update about pre-K. We do, we were planning, in the budget we're proposing, to do a repeat of a hundred and ten total students served. We opened registration this week, we already have eighty-seven students registered. So, you know, I think we've seen our student numbers starting to kind of level off in a good way. There was a, there was a decline when we did the student numbers in the last meeting, kind of during the COVID. Like the four or five years ago, those K and one numbers were down a little bit. I think an obvious part of that was the, the COVID years. But I think having pre-K, full-day pre-K has helped bring our numbers back up. But it seems popular this upcoming year. Transportation.
So just a quick overview on transportation, we'll get a little bit more detail. So just some facts about it, we have twenty-three buses and twenty-four vans. Vans are the small buses, that's how they refer to them. The number of students transported in the dis, in district is seventeen sixty-five. Number of students transported to, at a district placement is a hundred and forty-three. Currently, we have thirty-two bus drivers, and two are currently training. Matt and I were more excited about the two that were currently training because that's optimistic. And we have fourteen bus monitors. We are still looking to hire bus drivers, we do train. I don't want to sound like a commercial, but it will allow us to bring some of our children back. We, we do have runs that are out through BOSI's in total transportation. So the more drivers we do have, we have the vehicles, and we have a really good plan of turning them over and making sure that they're all well-working, but we would like to really bring back as many routes as we can. So we're hoping that number goes up a little bit.
What, what's your ideal number of bus drivers?
I guess it depends, if we took every route back, probably closer to forty, over forty. And there were times when we did have that. Unfortunately, the pool of bus drivers overall across all of the districts and counties is, is less. So any little bit helps, I'll, I'll take that. So transportation propositions. So there's, there's some thought on the mandate that the governor has and whether that's gonna stay. Right now, we have no idea that it isn't. This twenty-five, twenty-six school year technically would be the last time, if there is no change, that you can buy gas and diesel buses. And, you know, so I asked our transportation supervisor what she would like. This is kind of more of a wish list, so she would like three seventy-two-passenger buses and two smaller buses, one would be a wheelchair bus and one would be a small van. That's her wish list, we're not quite sure.
Can I jump in just on this? Just to remind, just to do a reminder, the, two years ago, voters approved one electric bus. Then we, you know, we did the study and we, we found, you know, disco, not discovered, we figured out the capacity, the electrical capacity. And so, and then we also got the grant for two, or the possibility to get the grant for two buses. So last year, we kind of revoted with the public for two electric buses, and it was approved. So our rough timeline for the two electric buses is this summer.
Yes.
With the charger and with all of that. The governor's mandate Anne Marie's talking about is to, for districts to switch completely over to buying electric buses by twenty-twenty-seven. This, you know, we only, we only have the capacity of working with Central Hudson and like the review team, we only have the capacity right now to do two electric buses. To do more than two electric buses, we would have to do a capital project at the Transportation Department to increase like the charging capability. It wouldn't be a huge capital project, but we would have to do that. It was not part of our plan for the fifty-million-dollar capital project that went in last year. I think we felt. I think we felt the needs of the buildings were too great to to also add that in. So we to to do more than two electric buses, we would need to do probably a small capital project to start addressing the issues at the department.
Does it, what does what does small mean?
I'm sorry?
What does small mean, like ten million?
I don't have a number. We'd have to come back at the next meeting and have a number for that. I I think it would probably be less than that, but we can get a very rough estimate.
I think it would be helpful just for us when we're talking to our representatives to so that they can start to understand the kind of money that we're.
Right.
You know, that we can't even move forward.
Right. To the the conversion to electric buses is is something I personally support. However, it doesn't just require voter approval of the purchase of the buses. In many instances, it requires, you know, a capital, some sort of capital project to transform your department, which is in some ways more complex than per, well, in a lot of ways is more complex than purchasing the buses. I just, you know, I know we talked about, so we do replace buses regularly where they're, you know, either the two electric ones or or these. And we do do that for, they hit a certain year and mileage, and we have a formula for replacing.
Correct.
And that's what this would fit.
Right. This is this is still part of our plan that we have been doing over the last couple of years. We're going to evaluate whether, you know, they definitely need a wheelchair bus. So that is, that's a definite. If we feel this proposition doesn't fit within our other budget priorities, then we might reduce it a little bit. But this would be her, you know, her wish list, you know, worrying that we might not be able to purchase gas and diesel going forward. That's kind of how I'm looking at it this way. But we are excited. The purchase order was done for the electric buses, so they're on schedule to come. We need to install the chargers before they deliver the electric buses, which that part of that grant was for chargers as well. So the chargers are on order as well. So we'll keep you posted as to when when they're going to come. So it'll, the two buses actually give the Transportation Department a really good idea of how they work. We're going to put them out on routes, see how they function. There's a big learning curve with them as well, so we're hoping they get here sooner than later.
Are these three buses replacing three that we currently have in our fleet?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. So those buses would would be traded in. So that's how the, you know, the value would be.
So that we could get a credit for those buses for trading them out?
Yeah.
And then would the other, so would the electric buses be extra? Like, or would they like be the bullpen or would we be using them as well? You know, just because, you know, we we our square mileage is smaller than, say, a bigger district, so they might be able to work within a city, you know, a smaller.
Regularly used as the plan.
Yes, yes.
They're part of like a regular.
So they'd be in use?
Replacement purchase, yeah.
Yes.
I mean, you're right. We we have a smaller sort of footprint than most districts, but we'd probably use them on our the shortest routes or the short shorter routes that we have.
Right.
Just to be on the safe side.
I mean, we'd like to use them kind of all over, like a smaller run or a larger run, like just to see what the capability are, see how the battery charges, come up with a plan on how to, you know, charge them overnight, make sure they're ready. You know, so there's a lot of learning to do with it, and I think it would be great to kind of put them all over the place just to kind of say, I mean, let's it lets the bus drivers get used to them, too, because there's going to be training for them. There's going to be training for the mechanics. There's some training for fire departments locally, too. And the bus company actually provides all of that when we purchase the buses.
I I but I guess what I'm asking is, so if we had the three new plus the two electric, which we're not sure we're going to use them both, does that mean that we have five buses that would be going out or only three? Like.
We would have five going out. I'm not sure. We probably would only trade in three, you know, like not and and not not do five, right? So we would have the electric buses. We would use all five of them, but trade in three.
Okay.
And these electric buses are supposed to be ready this year?
This this summer, yes.
Summer, and we have space to house them, just these two?
Just the two, exactly.
The two that were voted on last year.
Okay.
And we do a three-tier drop-off. What I mean is you do a high school run, middle school run, and then elementary run. It's not a two-tier where it's like the middle school, high school together and elementary.
Right.
So they're going out three times, and then they would have to.
Be charged.
Charged and then do a three-run going home, too.
So that's all the the logistics, I think, that we need to probably figure out.
Probably put them on the shorter runs, right?
I want it on a long run.
And are these electric buses seventy-two-passengers?
Right.
They are, okay.
This wasn't part of the electric bus deal that two of our older diesel buses had to be permanently removed from the fleet?
Right, yes. But they are not, they are currently being used as within the requirements, but as little as possible. So two diesels will go.
So for this, just to kind of talk about process, on on April twenty-second is when we would finalize what's on the ballot. So I think for this, to give you a little bit more background at the next meeting, I think what we could provide for you is what buses these would be replacing. We so we've established the wheelchair one. We have to put on the ballot no matter what, but let's maybe put together which ones it's replacing. So so you have that information.
Yeah, we usually see like the mileage and the year and everything.
So, you know, just so then we can make a final decision, I think, on April seventh, you know, just about. Or you get the last information you need to make a decision about the propositions.
And sorry, is this seven-ten part of the eighty-six million budget or this is separate from that?
It would be, the the debt related to the seven-hundred-and-ten would be part of the budget. So we would have to do a bond anticipation of those numbers that I showed you in debt service. That the amount to finance this over five years is in the twenty-six-million-dollar project. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And just technology, maybe we'll just kind of tech team this one. But just to give a shout out to the guy behind me, right? Mike Adamcheck has been doing an amazing job as our interim director all year. And so we are going to do our best, our best at just sort of talking about what some of their initiatives are. But just can't thank Mike enough for stepping up this year and really helping out the entire district. So we we have several projects we're working on. So one is a new phone system across our phone system is very outdated. In fact, it it really, it won't, like, the the contract for repair and all of that ends.
January.
January. So we'll be working on, we don't have all the details set yet, but putting a new phone system in place starting this summer. And over the course of the fall, we may be able to sort of run both concurrently while we put the new one in. New switches at the high school, partially funded by E-Rate, update to firewall for network security. Just a shout out to the whole technology department. And Mike, with the attention they pay to our network security, they're extremely vigilant with what they bring. And and so obviously, we want to support that. We do have a Chromebook replacement cycle, and it tends to be eighth grade. It's like a is a give or take, like of seventh and eighth grade, it tends to be a replacement year. That may be good news in my house because the one my son has is kind of on its last, on its last legs. But so and and as I mentioned, the price for Chromebooks has increased, at least the ones we're purchasing, but it seems pretty much across the board.
Do we get a credit for returning or do you return these Chromebooks and do we get credit for that?
No.
They get recycled.
When they're done, they're.
They're done.
Yeah, they're, I mean, we we dispose of them responsibly.
We do.
We have a whole plan for doing that, but, yeah, when they're, when they're done, they're, they're pretty done. And then to replace the virtual server. So for the next meeting, we'll put some numbers to this. We just were kind of working on this on Friday, but we just wanted to talk about what some of the initiatives were for the technology department. And then just just next steps. So these these aren't on the slide, but bringing more information about the buses we would be replacing to help make a final decision about the proposition. We'll have some numbers attached to the technology budget. We wanted to start sharing what their initiatives were. We're going to talk about the instructional budget at the next meeting. Saggy's going to be presenting. She's going to attach some data to some of the things we're proposing to make a case for for those positions. And this slide, Heather had a great slide up where she kind of showed the number of staff in each building that serves special education. And we'll do the same, just sort of for everything, for each of our buildings in terms of at least certificated staff, in terms of showing really no increase besides these two positions that we're talking about for reading support. The math intervention teacher at the elementary level that we'd like to add, we're using a retirement to fund that one. So we're really just talking about an increase in two positions. No administrator increase, no, so no increase in the amount of administrators we have, just two teachers. And we'll get into much greater detail at the next meeting on that. We'll have slides that compare our tax rates with other districts, as I mentioned verbally, but it'll be more powerful visually. We're kind of in the bottom thirty, forty percent of Dutchess County in terms of tax rates. At least last year we were. And so regionally, we're 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 low compared with many other counties and all of the districts in those counties. And then we're also going to do a little bit more of the expenditure breakdown. Like I said, just to kind of sum up, this budget that we're in the midst over these meetings and proposing would be at the five-point-one-five tax levy rate, which is at the tax cap. It's a budget, again, we'll be making this case over the next few meetings, but it's a budget that allows us to keep doing the amazing things we're doing with also targeting some really specific student support that we think is needed. We also will have like a multi-year plan that in the in the future year, in next year, hopefully, we're able to address changes with the middle school schedule that we'd like to do. But that said, if that's the proposal, the budget number is our proposal, but we're happy to entertain adjustments or talk about adjustments with you all that you want to see us make. April twenty-second is when we need to finalize things for the ballot, for our work in communicating with the community, things like that. The last part, I'll say, is we've really tried to, we've really tried to address in this budget a lot of the things that we learned about in the survey we gave in the fall. We obviously cannot meet every single item in that survey. We would need probably twice the amount of money that we currently have. That said, I think it it really, with professional development that we'll get into at the next meeting, Heather started talking about it tonight. It really addresses supporting reading instruction, both through PD and additional teachers. It supports mental health supports in terms of like the Astro Clinic being added to Rambout and the addition of that Bright program at the high school. Like, it, we feel like it's a really powerful step in a really strong direction for the district. But like, this is a conversation. And so so tonight and over the next couple of meetings, we want to make sure we're bringing back the information that you want to help sort of guide you. Last thing I'll say, I don't have this on the slide, but we'll have a bunch of communication things in place over the next eight weeks. First week or two of April, I'm gonna, I I think I have every PTA meeting. I may be missing one, but I'll be at least a part of the agenda for a PTA meeting at every one of our schools just to talk about where we are with the budget. Once we adopt, once you all adopt the budget in April twenty-second, I'll do a few community forums. I always will do one digitally, but then I'll do some in person at different locations. And we're working on just a number of other communication sort of vehicles to talk about what's going in the budget, including some short video that we'll have for social media and our website, things like that. And also, lastly, we're working on an FAQ regarding the budget. That'll be up just in terms of questions people have, frequently asked questions that people have and answers to them. So we have a number of things we're trying to work on over the next, really, two months, a little bit less than two months to get ready for the budget vote.
Just a question. Have you started to think about with the governor giving the two percent increase and then the Assembly and the Senate saying one was two-point-nine and the other was three? If we got additional funds, what you'd use those additional funds for? Or would you look to like credit it back to the taxpayers? I don't need an answer, but just start thinking about as to if we do, where I get some additional funds, because they usually negotiate higher than what the governor proposed.
Right.
And they were at two, nine and three.
I think I think what would help me with that is, like, when we talked about what the implication would be for less than five-one-five, right? And we talked about specific numbers. I think what maybe we can play around with there is with like additional revenue, you know, what we can do with that with either with either scenario you're talking about.
Like, I'm not saying, like, we talked about if we reduce it from the five-point-one-five to a six-eight or or forty-eight or something, but if you had things that you wanted to implement and and things that would be reoccurring costs where you'd say, hey, look, if we got this additional fund, this would be the first add. Or, oh, look, to stay at the tax cap, or this would be the second add. Or would it be like, oh, if we're going to get the additional fund, we're going to go down to that four, forty-eight or something?
I think I I need to get a better handle on how much we'd be talking about. Like, if I I feel like my experience with this negotiation is they try to meet somewhere, right? There's like a some sort of compromise that takes place. And so then we have to kind of guess and figure out what additional revenue would come from that compromise. I will say this, like, what we're proposing with like the two additional reading teachers at the elementary level is tight. So there's not a lot of wiggle room there. We really want to get these teachers in. We, you know, if if it was like a lot more revenue, I would consider maybe this moving this middle school idea up or coming back to you with the idea of like this would be some additional money and like, how could that impact what we're thinking about? What we're thinking about like tax levy rate and all that kind of stuff. I I'd want to play around with that one. Now I've got something to, I haven't, I haven't, I think I I sometimes get a little cynical. And I tend not to think about additional revenue too much, but I'll start thinking about that. Now I'm going to be off like, you know, in my mind on that. But what, you know, what we're proposing is pretty tight. And so it probably would provide us just with some breathing room for unplanned contingencies that happen during the year. But also, I think I think that could be a conversation with you all at the next meeting, right? So we'll we'll play with some of the numbers and sort of put it out to you in terms of what you all think about that.
Matt, I'm I'm just a little confused because I thought at the last meeting that I knew about the two elementary, but I thought that this also included some staffing at Rambout as well for the possible new program. Is that in for this year or not?
We were going to get into that more in detail at the next meeting, but it's probably have to be in year two of like a two-year plan.
You mean the nine period?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the nine.
It would be, nine-period day would be probably adding about four staff to pull it off, right? Three to four. And right now, we're getting these two reading teachers in, like, and it's tight.
So when you mentioned, when you said going to four-point-six-eight, I think, was the first number.
Yeah.
You said that would be reducing the two reading teachers?
That we're proposing. It would be, that would be more in my mind like a flat budget, like we're just kind of.
So it's not the reading and the Rambout? The Rambout wasn't in that. We can't use that as a to get below five?
Right.
Okay.
I think I was in the same.
I thought that was my, yeah, I was going to go on that route, but, okay. My my, the struggle I'm having right now is not is not having that Rambout thing here. It's difficult to look at, you know, what we're doing for, you know, because it's the end of March here and we're getting close. And I don't want to cut AIS staff, but I'm just concerned at being over. And I don't want to cut AIS staff, but I'm just concerned at being over five. I said at the last meeting, I'd like to get under if we could, but that's just where I'm at with it. I just think it's a little high.
Can you talk about what the savings would be? First of all, I just want to say that I feel like the reading and the math support is, is based on data that we saw earlier in the year and we know the need is there and, and you know, definitely want to fulfill that need. So thank you for kind of building the case, whether you meant to or not, with, you know, with the information we received earlier. But can you talk about what the possible savings would be? You know, if the, if the cost per family is around $122, if we went down to the 4.68, do you know how much savings that would be per household approximately?
I, I don't, but what I can say is over the last five years, you know, with the change in assessments and not just people's assessment on their homes, but new properties coming in, that $122, for example, for Beacon will not be that at all. It would be less. So I, Eric, I know you struggle with the 5.15 and it's a high percentage, but it definitely will not be what people are paying in taxes. So I think that's, you know, because that levy amount, even though we're increasing it by 5.15, it's gonna be spread over more property owners. So everybody, that's the only reason.
No, I fully, I, I get that.
Okay.
I get that. Yeah, I, yeah.
I, I just want to jump in, like, I, I apologize for any confusion about what we're trying to propose. I think the reason I've been dragging it out is I've been spending an enormous amount of time behind the scenes trying to figure out ways to get it all in, or to see what it would look like to get it all in. And probably a couple of weeks ago, I just, like, we just were really hitting, or I was hitting my head up against the wall, probably too often to try to figure out a way to address the Rambout schedule and the additional reading teachers at the elementary level. So then I, I'm trying to shift my thinking, and we've never done this before, and I know, you know, plans can change, but to really try to communicate about like what we want to do in next year's budget is address, the 26, 27 budget is to address the Rambout schedule. We tend not to talk about things, like, we always talk about things year to year, I'd like to shift that and have that be the case. But I apologize for confusion with that. I, we, part of it has been, we've been trying to spend, we've been trying to figure out ways behind the scenes to pull it all off. And it's just, hasn't been possible, every which way we've tried to look at it.
Do we, I don't want to speak like doom, but if we're looking at Rambout being at four, possibly a four per FTE increase, right, next year, and right now we're looking at adding two, I think 0.5 with the PPS, you know, I would imagine we're gonna have a struggle next year getting Rambout in as well, if things stay the way they are, correct?
We also have eight retirements.
Yeah, I was gonna ask about retirements for...
Yeah.
Part of, I mean, part of us being able to get this, get the reading teachers into this 5.15 is retirements, and then we have another group retiring.
Okay.
Next year, so that, I mean, but part of, part of it, Eric, though, is we would, if we had a year of flat state aid, like, you know, a year from now, that would make things a lot harder.
Right, I get that.
If we, if we had foundation aid, it's another election year, right? After the election? I can't, I'm sort of lost track of elections. But, you know, so my hope is that we would get two years in a row of state, if we increase state aid. This would be year one of that and year two. So in the communication around that, I would make sure I talk about state aid being pretty crucial to that. But, yeah, we, it's, you know, it's disappointing to me, and I'll get into a little bit more in detail at the next meeting, but I've been trying to figure out every which way to try to do it all in this, and we can't do it with what we have.
Well, and maybe if this is a philosophy that we have for next year, maybe we have to go on a, you know, a soapbox about why we feel that, that the nine-period day is so important and we have to sell that if we're fearful that the amount might be the same or more next year. So, you know, it might just mean something we have to do across the, you know, district here, if we really feel that way. And if we don't feel that way, that's fine, too. I mean, we go in a different direction, but, you know.
Right, I mean, I think also, though, it's, you know, going to the cap is a, is a way to help us towards those improvements next year. It's part of planning ahead in a lot of ways. And, and I think that the, you know, the impact of cutting it a little bit doesn't really change the taxpayers' experience that much, but changes our ability to do some sort of larger programming change like this, you know, that it sets us up to be able to do that more, more reliably.
One of the things, I think one, and this may be sort of foundational to all of them, one budget accomplishment I'm proud of over my eight years here is things that we've expanded, we've never pulled them back. And, and I think, you know, I think that's a lot to your planning, Anne Marie and the rest of the, you know, team, the administrative teams planning, but things we've, things we've moved forward with, we've never had to say, oops, and, and yank it back. And so, and so I think that's part of what led to my thinking about sort of phasing things in over two years and being clear with the public, or, you know, like, this is at least what our goal is. And, because I, I think my biggest worry of trying to get everything in, I mean, it was pretty impossible, but also like that, we then have to like, we have just one year of the new schedule at Rambout, and then we have to pull, like, pull it back as a budget cut. And we've managed to avoid that. I honestly think part of, part of avoiding that has been us going to the tax cap every year, too. It allows us like kind of a reliable sense of revenue. And so, you know, even with like things we've done in extracurriculars, classes we've offered, from sort of smaller things to bigger things, like the elementary class size, pre-K expansion, mental health expansions, all of those things, we've never had to pull it back on any of those things. So, and, and part of what goes into that, like last year, we really didn't propose any major new thing in the budget. It was, it was in a sense kind of a hanging on to what we already have. This year, we've kind of clawed and scratched to get like the two reading teachers in. I think we'll be prepared and ready to do that again, like a year later for the middle school schedule change. But I think that's something that's been, I don't know the word, it kind of creates a sense of reliability, maybe, with staff and, and the community, and also like a sense of trust, I think in terms of like, you know, that we haven't had to pull things back. And so, you know, it's, it's sometimes hard for me, because I want things quicker. And so this has been a tricky winter for me, because I put a, you know, we spend a lot of time trying to design what would go into a new middle school schedule, but, but I also think I want, if we're able to do it, I want to do it so it lasts, you know. And, so that goes, that's kind of goes into that two-year thinking, too. The, the last thing I'll say to that is just, I, I think we've always, even though like some of our work has been very intentional, like around class size reduction at the elementary level, I think pre-K, there's a lot of things on that list. I, I've never talked about stuff that I wanted in like sort of the year after's budget. I've always been year to year, and I think that'd be a positive shift for us to clear out with like our administrative team, at the very least, to say like, next year, this is what we're going after, like, we're going after this change at the middle school. And, and everything else is sort of beneath that in a priority. Sorry for the, for the long speech, though, but, so we, you know, we're trying to put things that we think really support our young people without having to pull them back.
I think that, I mean, it's hard to shift your thinking, given the way the state works and that, you know, 40% of our budget is state aid. I think, I, I think it's a really good thing, but I think it is a challenge to allow yourself to think that way, because we're just always on eggshells, wondering, you know, what it's gonna be.
But, you know, but the other part of it, too, Eric, maybe this is a little bit linked to what you were saying, like, if we set a goal, you were talking more about really kind of communicating the possibility of a change a year out. But the other thing it enables us to do is to really prepare for finding different ways to pay for it, you know? And, and so maybe, you know, maybe there's grants we can go after, at least just to get it started, you know, things like that. So like, it, it gives us a chance to look at other options. What other questions do folks have? Or, so we talked about some of the things we're bringing back to the April 7th meeting. We'll do a little bit more in terms of the numbers with the technology budget. We'll talk about that bus proposition, the buses it would be replacing, so you're aware and can make an informed decision about that. We'll talk about our tax rates in comparison with other communities. We'll get much more detailed about the instructional part of the budget proposal and this two-year thing. And, and again, apologies for confusion with that.
I have, I have one question about the buses. Just, just knowing that we don't have as many bus drivers as we would like to have and that we maybe have buses sitting around, if there is room, you know, looking at the bus budget to, to maybe reduce there, if, I mean, I'd love to think that we're gonna hire eight bus drivers for next year, but it, it doesn't seem realistic, given the climate in the country, that it's just hard to find bus drivers. So maybe that's a, a place that we could save a little bit.
Any other, in terms of information that people had? Well, what Anthony mentioned in terms of aid from the state potentially increasing, we'll do some work around that in terms of what that means.
Great.
For us, too?
Any other questions or comments? No? Okay. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Okay, looking at tonight's agenda, there is one change. It's 15.05. The revised cash flow chart for February 2025 was added. And that is it for tonight. Can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of a particular individual? So moved? Second?
Second.
Second, Chris? All in favor?
Aye.
Passes, the board will return in about 30 minutes. We are back. Matt, can we have your superintendent's report?
Yeah, I will be quick. I just wanted to provide an update on something. Back on February 10th, I gave an overview of what I wanted to do with board goals and the strategic planning. So our, our goal for the April 7th meeting is just to submit, at, at least to start submitting a few of these short plans, these sort of component plans for the strategic plan to the board, and we'll talk about them briefly at the board meeting. But my goal is, as we go through like, sort of like that final phase of the budget season, we can refer back to some parts of the plan. So, you know, Heather's presentation tonight showed what, you know, what she's wanting to do with her department for next year, so there'll be no surprises there. Saggy will be talking about, you know, academics, reading, math, et cetera, at the next meeting, but she'll also have like a short overview plan to share for those two areas. A few of the areas, like the people are in transition, but we'll have special education, we'll have reading, math, I'll have a communication piece on, we'll have the athletics and health one done. Again, we're talking short, easy to read, like one page, snapshots of what our goals are for the upcoming year. PD will be sort of a foundation for all of Saggy's work, but we can also separate that one out for PD. Some others will be a little bit later, just because of transitions happening with people who are in charge of the departments, but we'll have those ready to share with the board and then share publicly later in April on the website and stuff like that. Again, you know, shouldn't be big surprises, but we want to start making that shift with that work.
Okay, great.
And that's all I have.
Okay. So then, moving on to board comments, starting with Semra.
Thanks for those reports. I think they were clear on numbers, which is super helpful for us, and I look forward to hearing more about it.
Thanks. Great. Alina?
No comment.
Okay, Chris?
I just wanted to note that the deadline for nominating petitions to be on the school board is coming up in about a month. So I think last year, as I understand, was one of the first kind of competitive, where there were more candidates in seats for the first time, which I think is good for voters to have a, a choice and, and express a preference there. So just encourage anyone who's watching, or all of us and the folks that we know, to think about it, consider it. It's been really rewarding, beginning of my first year here, and I hope that we continue to get some interest in that. But that's all. Thanks.
Okay, great. Levon?
No comment.
Alrighty. Eric?
Just that we have a facilities committee meeting coming up. We had to postpone it from tonight till 6 o'clock on April 7th. That's all from me.
Okay. And then Anthony?
No comments.
Alrighty, Meredith?
We had a policy meeting, and you'll see one policy on the agenda tonight for approval for first read at the ex officio student member of the board. We looked at a few other policies, which, the student harassment and bullying prevention and intervention policy, which needs a little bit more looked, to be looked at by legal, and then advertising in the schools, which still needs a little work as well. We're gonna meet again on April 10th at 7:00 PM. And we also had a Proll meeting last week, where we just basically discussed communication around the budget. It was a really productive meeting, I think. And that's it.
Did we set another meeting for Proll? Do we have another meeting?
We did not.
Okay. But we can hold off on that. We don't need to do that.
I think we can.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to say that I thank you to the folks who completed the self-evaluation on Super UVA, Anthony, Meredith. I also completed it. I just wanted to let everybody know that I extended the deadline to this Friday to give people who maybe didn't finish or haven't started a chance to, to complete it. I, I think I would like us to use this information to sort of figure out what we need to do more of or better, or, or start talking about for other retreats. I think it would be really helpful insight, so if everybody can please fill that out. I would, you know, love to say, if you fill it out, then I'll put you in a, like a drawing for like a free iPad, but that's probably illegal, so I will not do that, but just do it out of the goodness of your heart.
Flora, on the valuation?
Yeah.
So I did it, right? So I did all the boxes, right?
Yeah.
It still says 50%, so do you have to write a comment?
You do have to put a comment in each of the sections.
But you can put, you know...
You can just put, it's great.
Little trick for the ones that you don't want to expand on, just put NA. Not applicable.
Yeah.
All that, come on.
I'm, I usually write a sentence or two, just because I'm verbose.
The things that, that move you.
Eric, you'll learn.
No, well, when I, I just assumed that, when I saw 50%, I figured I had to do every one to get 100%. So I was like, I'll just do the check by, I didn't, okay, so, okay, I got it now.
Yeah, and I would say, you know, if you have a, if there's, if you feel like there's context there for what you, the reason you're rating it like that, it's, it's very helpful to have a sentence or two.
No, I understand. I just wasn't, I just didn't feel that I was gonna rate in each one, like a sum I would.
No, yeah, no.
I'm good with NA.
Just do the NA. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
There are ones you will see, because I think we could see each other's, right?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, you'll see.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't.
And then?
Got it.
And then A.
Okay.
Yeah. And then, the last thing I wanted to, I, you know, I feel like we've kind of nudged this, and this is a really question for you, Matt. Like, when do you think doing our, like, having a workshop to talk about board goals, when do you feel like that works into our plans? You know, should we do that further down the line? I mean, you know, it's, because it's something we've been talking about.
Right.
Um, uh, we'll share some of this planning at the next meeting. It won't be completely done.
Yeah.
Um, and then, um, I, I, we are so immersed in the budget, like maybe?
Yeah.
June?
Yeah, okay, that's great. I just want to give, give us like, sort of like a, a window in the future to...
And just while I'm thinking of calendar, um, Vicky and I might work with you just to start creating like a draft board calendar for next year, just cause...
Yeah.
Like especially those summer meeting dates can get tricky.
Yeah, for sure. Okay, sounds good. All right, that is all from me, so we can move on to the consent agenda. The use of the consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. Are there any items that any board members would like to have removed from the consent agenda?
I have one.
Okay.
Uh, 12.07G14.
12.07G14?
Correct.
Okay, anymore? All right. Can I have a motion to approve 11.01 through 15.06 minus 12.07G14?
So moved.
Meredith, second?
Second.
Alina, second? Uh, comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No? Okay, passes. Eight to zero. All right, uh, can I have a motion to approve 12.07G14?
So moved.
So moved by Levon, second by. Alina, uh, comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Abstaining?
Abstaining, okay. Passes seven to zero. Is that, if it's abstaining, is it seven to one?
No.
Seven to zero, okay.
With one abstention.
Okay, with one abstention, got it. Motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Move everyone, second?
Second.
Second by Chris. Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Passes, eight to zero. Good night.